We will call this special meeting to order because it is a special meeting with one primary purpose, maybe two. We'll dispense with our usual formalities of an invocation and a pledge. Item one on the agenda, as is always, public comment. That's the opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council on any subject within our jurisdiction and responsibility. If you're going to address the council, we ask that you fill out one of these white cards. They're available in the foyer and pass it to the city clerk. That way, we will have the information necessary to communicate with you should that be necessary. Should you ask for information, or should we need information from you, or should there be some reason to schedule a future agenda item to deal with whatever you may bring to our attention? Because what you share with us under public comment is not available to us until you speak. We have no way really to prepare and respond, so as a general rule, the council does not respond to any public comment items. So with that, I have two cards that wish to address this under item two, which is the paramedic issue. I have no cards indicating an interest to speak to the council under the public comment section. So assuming that that's the case, then I will, for the record, open the public comment section, ask if there's anyone in the audience who is here intending to speak to the council under public comment item one, even though you haven't filled out a card. Hearing none, then we will consider public comment completed. We will go to item two, which is written communications, to structure where we are with this subject. Several months ago, there was a presentation made to the city council by members of the fire department concerning the reasons for asking that the city consider paramedics. Wheaton from the fire department gave a very detailed and lengthy proposal at that council meeting, and we have had those materials with us since then. Subsequent to that, we ask for additional information, which has come in over time. We have that information with us as well. Ultimately, a committee was established to look at the various issues surrounding paramedics, options, costs, things such as that, and we have kind of been marking time up to this point, waiting for the committee to complete its work. With that, I will ask if the fire department who initiated this, or Mr. Wheaton, has anything further that they want to share with us before we go into our committee, update committee report? Okay, that's fine. I just want to give you a shot if you have anything further. Okay. Then I will defer to Roberts, the city manager, to structure the committee status at this point and tell us where we're at.
Mayor and council, as directed by the city council, there has been a committee that has met regularly on the proposal of looking at paramedic services for the city. Those seven items were addressed one by one. They are in your report. We are prepared to address each item and didn't know if there was a particular order that the council requested go in, or we just start with number one and work our way through?
I would like to make a suggestion, but before we go into that, I would like to introduce the paramedic committee members. As council recalls, on December the 18th, the committee was reformed again. We had formed the original committee to look into the nine items that the council wanted us to look into. So we do have on the committee, we have Doug Robertson from our city staff, we have Chief Becker from Victorville Fire Department, Dave Wheaton from the Victorville Fire Department, Brian Wells from the Victorville Fire Department, and we have Mike Romo and Greg Shorten from AMR. Those were your committee members. And what the committee is recommending at this time is that we be allowed to make our presentation in that the proposal from the county be the last item you do.
Who was the chairman of your committee? We'll defer to Councilman Cabrealis as the chairman of the paramedic committee. You're off the hook, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. We do have Doug Robertson, who has, we did provide the written report the council has, but he'll go verbally with you. And also, we have Dave Wheaton, because we did break up into some subcommittees, and Dave Wheaton would also make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to have served on the committee. I'm not sure exactly how, but I got the task of sort of documenting everything and putting it all together, and ultimately speaking to you tonight. I think I was sort of the only one who went into it without a preconceived notion of my preference. The first two requests actually don't have to do with specific committee assignments. The first one had to do with the county, as has been explained. Presentation will be given later tonight. AMR was requested to bid. They want to commend AMR for their influence on the committee. They definitely helped us out when we met with the hospitals on one of the other issues, and were definitely active participants in the committee. Ultimately, they were not able to submit a bid. Quickly going through these issues so that we can move on. The third request had to do with ISO. I believe Mayor Caldwell was one of your concerns regarding what happens to our ISO rating should the council choose to go to, switch to paramedics. And the short answer is that it would not affect our ISO rating. We received a letter, a response to your letter, Mr. Mayor, indicating that. The next request actually was an annual expenditure cost for going to a three-man engine with paramedics and a four-man engine. The four-man engine company is listed in the attachments under number four, and if you would flip to that quickly, you can see that the numbers go up at an extremely rapid rate. Starting out at just under $2 million next year, or this year, and then going up to a rate of about $8 million over the next 20 years. Based on those figures, we did not do a whole lot of further study on that, although it is covered a little bit later on when we talk about the assessment. The three-man engine company was difficult to quantify. Mr. Wheaton's proposal originally had a cost of about $550,000. I've seen various people that put together a cost estimate anywhere from in the $300,000 range up to $600,000. Ultimately, about a week ago when the committee met last, we decided that the $550 number was the most accurate number we could come up with, based on all of the estimates that we had in front of us. In addition to that, because part of going to a paramedic squad would include no longer being able to use paid-call firefighters to substitute for absences of firefighters, because they would not be paramedics, there was also some additional overtime cost. At that meeting, we came up with a determination of $250,000 for that dollar amount. Actually, meeting today with the city folks who are working on the finances that will be presented later to you tonight by our finance director, we estimated that actually that number might be a little bit high. There may be a little bit of double counting in there between the $550 and the $250, and I don't know exactly where that sorted out. John Sullivan will present that later, but I believe that number probably comes down by about $100,000. The next request was to check with Victor Valley College whether or not they could and would provide some level of training, hopefully at a reduced expense. And Dave Wheaton was sort of hounded the college. He got numbers from them, and ultimately, we wanted to see it on college letterhead, and he was able to get them to put, sort of putting it in writing, this is exactly what the cost will be. And that was $825 per student for the training itself. That doesn't obviously include any overtime that would be required to cover that person as he or she went through the training. The next request was actually a very interesting one for the three of us that went. We formed a subcommittee. We had hoped to bring together four, or five, or six chiefs from other cities in and around San Bernardino County to sort of give us their advice on their paramedic programs, any pitfalls that we should expect, you know, positive, negatives. Ultimately, we weren't able to haul them all together for one big meeting, sort of how to have a roundtable discussion, so we went on the road and went to them so that we could get the information that we needed. Councilman Cabrealis, myself, and Captain Wheaton went on that. And the consensus amongst those chiefs, and those cities are listed here, it was City of San Bernardino, Rialto, Rensselaer, Montclair, and Apple Valley, consensus was that there would be no or very little impact by adding paramedics in the number of times that our personnel would end up having to respond to the hospital on a follow-up call. One of the comments that was made was that if that patient is bad enough that transport needs assistance from a paramedic, they would most likely need assistance from your EMT currently, so that the change would really not be there. It did end up with a potential new problem, a management issue that you need to be aware of, and that is that it creates a bit of a struggle, it could create a bit of a struggle in the reporting on that squad. So you have a captain, an engineer, and a paramedic firefighter. Ultimately, the paramedic firefighter is the one that makes the determination whether or not there is a follow-up, or also makes the determination on any medical issues, sort of overrides the captain on those calls. So it simply is a management issue that could create a strain amongst the squad on occasion. There was not a great deal of that, according to the other chiefs, but it certainly is an issue that the council needs to be aware of as you deliberate.
On that one, wouldn't we just set a policy and make a statement that under those special circumstances, the override would be there for the EMT?
Absolutely. We can set and would probably set that policy that, exactly what procedures those paramedics would be required to follow. But where that could come in is say, I'm the paramedic on the engine, and you're the captain, Councilman Rothschild, if I choose for whatever reason that I want to go to the hospital, or I want to go with that patient to the hospital, it's my decision, not yours, as my at least field supervisor. And it could create a conflict. It was not something that was expressed that it happened to a great degree by the other chiefs. It simply is a management issue that you need to be aware of as we move forward. Also, I had mentioned it a little bit earlier, the paid-call firefighter program would not necessarily go away, but it would change drastically, and simply because right now, a paid-call firefighter is called in in the event that a firefighter is out sick or for some other reason. Additionally, if a captain is out, right now, our procedure, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but our procedure is to elevate the engineer to the captain level, elevate the firefighter to the engineer level, and then bring in a paid-call firefighter to replace that firefighter. Ultimately, because the firefighter positions would all be eliminated over time, the paid-call firefighter would no longer be eligible to replace a paramedic firefighter, because they're not a paramedic. So ultimately, the most likely direction would be to change that to more of a reserve force, and that would result in some higher overtime costs that I talked about earlier. One other issue is that right now, we've got firefighter positions, we've got 15 plus three more at SCLA, and those positions ultimately would need to go away if the council decides to go with a three-man engine company, because the firefighter position in each one of those engine companies becomes a paramedic slash firefighter. Now, that means that those 15 to 18 people would end up needing to promote to the next level, which is engineer, be trained to become a paramedic firefighter, or if neither of those options worked out, come up with some other way to deal with those individuals who ultimately are going to remain a firefighter, whether that's at SCLA or in some sort of a squad capacity. I don't know. It's just one more issue that would be sort of lingering out there until the program was at full implementation. The next request had to do with charging a fee for services or a service fee. And the city of Montclair is one of those that we talked to that does charge that service fee. The returns on that, from a collection standpoint, are dismal at best, 25 to 30% is what they estimated. And even they, most of the other cities, do not charge a fee and do not have a service, mostly because they consider it double-charging to a certain degree. And then additionally, a lot of them have looked at implementing a fee, or those that have implemented a fee have done so because of recalcitrant individuals who sort of use the paramedic service as a ride to the hospital. And the reality is, those individuals typically are not the ones who end up honoring the fee, paying the service, or paying the fee. It's folks that are probably not going to use the service except in an absolute emergency. So it would really not, although it may bring in some revenue, it really did not address the issue of overuse of the service, because those folks simply didn't pay the fees. Also included in your packet is a partialized base, on a partialized basis, for the city of Victorville, should we opt for the four-person engine company and spread that cost amongst all the parcels in the city. This is simply a math project. In 2008, based on the number of lots, the fee would be about $55, and then that would grow over time, over the same 20-year period or so, to about $85. That's based on two items. One is that the figures that I mentioned earlier in item number four, divided by the number of parcels that are in Victorville, and as Victorville grows and becomes more and more partialized, the number of parcels expands, so the number of people that would be asked to pay that expands as well, which results in a growth line that is somewhat flatter than the actual Request number eight had to do with the meeting with the hospital administrators, and they were all very interested in partnering with the city on some sort of an educational program to attempt to reduce the number of trips into the hospital via transport. There's a difficult situation, though, where folks seem to think that if they're brought into the hospital in an ambulance, that that will somehow improve their chance of being seen, or it will quicken their chance of being seen. And that didn't really seem to be the case. What ultimately ends up happening is this concept of stacking or on-the-wall, everyone has a different name for it, but bed delays. Essentially, what happens is those folks have to wait just as long as they would have had they come in through the front door, but unfortunately, the AMR paramedics have to stay there with them, because they haven't been admitted to the hospital yet. They were, hospital administrators were willing to work with us on that issue from an educational standpoint, but they have certain laws and rules that they have to follow that doesn't allow them to loosen up that standard. Specifically, talking with Desert Valley, someone made a suggestion of, could you take those folks that come in that could be seen by urgent care, based on their injury or their illness, and simply transport them to urgent care? And it's absolutely strictly forbidden for them to do that, apparently. It makes perfect sense, but the government does not allow it. Another interesting concept actually came from the guys from AMR that is happening in the Antelope Valley, and that is that they do a bit of a triage with a charge nurse at the emergency room door, and when an ambulance comes up, if that patient is well enough to wait in the waiting room, they're taken off the gurney and escorted to the waiting room, and they simply wait with everyone else. Didn't have any statistics yet as to how successful that has been, but logic would dictate that if someone is not getting seen in a more expeditious manner anymore, that perhaps that could reduce some of those unnecessary The last item had to do with insurance rates, and what would happen to our insurance rates should the ISO rating fall from a three down to a four. Councilman Cabrealis contacted Ryan McKechnan with ISU RMAC Insurance, and his comment, I've quoted it in there, is that an increase in protection class rating from the current rating of three to a rating of four, or even five, will have very little impact on insurance rates. There's a letter in the packet there under item number nine that addresses it in a little bit further detail. It was only a few dollars more going between those things. But also keep in mind that, based on the research we had done with the ISO, just the mere fact of changing from firefighters to paramedic firefighters would not have an impact on our ISO rating anyway. If our ISO rating is going to be adjusted up or down, it's not going to be based on whether or not our firefighters are also paramedics. That's the extent of the requests that you had. I'm certainly available to answer any questions. In anticipation of a little bit further detail request on the three-man engine company based on costs, the committee talked about potential implementation of such a program, and if the council is interested, Captain Wheaton has prepared a brief presentation on implementation schedule that he came up with that could be a bit of a kickstart into the program should the council ultimately decide that option.
Questions or comments from members of the council. Mr. Robbins? We have Captain Wheaton. Do your presentation.
I'm happy to announce my presentation will be much shorter this time than last time. I'm waiting around to key it up. There we go. One of the things I want to clear up that Doug had talked about was the $550,000 figure. That's when the program's fully implemented. So what I'm going to try and do is try and draw you a picture of how this implementation thing might work. Do we have all the answers? No, that would be really boring to have all the answers. So as we try and plan for it, I think we can come up with some potentials and things that we could talk about. So one of the advantages to the phased-in is that it's totally budget-driven. If the money's not available, the program does not expand. So whenever we start the program, if money's available, we can expand it. If money's not available, we can bring it back. We can even stop it where it's at. And in this day and age, with the crisis going on with budgets, that's probably a pretty nice advantage to have. Hey, the launching point that we see for phasing this in is when we staff Station 315. That's the station that we just broke ground on. Now, we're going to need 18 paramedics when Station 315 is staffed. That would be if we were going to cover all the engines all the time. Now, currently, we have a firefighter vacancy, but it's really not at the firefighter level right now. We have some engineer positions that are a little higher in rank. We have lots of firefighters that are qualified to test for that position. So we would expect that one of our firefighters would be promoted whenever the hiring freeze ends, and that would open up a firefighter position at the bottom. Now, with the staffing of Station 315, we have the potential of hiring 15 paramedics. I'm sorry. We have the potential of hiring nine paramedics. Now, I say potential because, again, it rides on the fact that all of our in-house personnel will be promoted. And there really isn't any way that we can say, oh, yeah, everybody's going to get promoted all the time. That may not happen. So it really is just a potential. I can say it's been a long time since someone has been hired other than at the firefighter rank, but we can't say for sure that all nine positions are going to be created. Now, with the current firefighter opening, we would have the potential of having 10 paramedics when 315 is staffed. Now, when 315 is staffed, there will be six engines in the city. If we do this, if we hire the paramedics in lieu of firefighters, we'll have three of the engines, or half of the engines, staffed with paramedics and have one paramedic left over. It takes three paramedics or three firefighters to staff an engine company. So we have six, and we have 10 paramedics, six engine companies. So we could staff half the engines on any given day and actually have one individual left over. Now, the leftover paramedic could be used on his particular engine on the day that he's working. That certainly is something that we could look at. We still need eight paramedics. So we staff 315, we hire all our people that we're going to hire. We are still short eight paramedics to staff our engines 24/7. We're not really short anybody. Those positions are still occupied by firefighters, excuse me, firefighter EMTs. Now, current Victorville firefighters could be sent to paramedic school, and this is what we've worked close with the college, to be able to provide, we have some cost analysis on what it would cost to send one of our own firefighters. So as we staff 315, if the money's available, we need to start sending our own firefighters to the paramedic school. Any new firefighters that we hire, we would hire paramedics. If someone were to leave, or if someone were to retire, or some other way, another position would open up, instead of hiring a firefighter, we would hire a paramedic. Now, Station 316, now that one, who knows when that one will open, because we don't even know when 315 is actually going to be staffed, but 316 is on the books. So at the opening of 316, which the date is unknown, there'll be another potential of hiring nine more paramedics. The same situation that we had with the current station. There'll be 21 paramedics will be needed to staff all the engines 24/7 in Victorville when we open up 316, two stations away. After hiring nine paramedics for Station 316, only two paramedics will be needed to staff all the engines every day in the city of Victorville. Now, if we did nothing, if we sent none of our own people to the paramedic class, and we opened 315, and maybe the economy comes back in a few years, and we open 316, we'll need two more paramedics. Now, this only includes the city stations, not the airport. But given the fact that we don't know when 315 will be manned, let alone when we're going to build 316, it would make a lot of sense not to bank on that and begin the process of sending our firefighters to the paramedic class. Now, what are we going to do with our firefighters? There's a possibility that a firefighter won't promote. There's a possibility he won't want to go to medic school. You know, that's something that might happen. That particular problem is a long ways away, but it might occur. So what we can do is we can, if we implement a squad program, and the fire chief, I believe, is going to make a short presentation on maybe phasing in some type of a squad plan in the future, if we were to do that, there would be a place on the squad for that EMT firefighter. We would vision a paramedic firefighter on the squad along with a EMT firefighter. So if we implement that program, there's a place for firefighters to go there. They can also staff the airport. Now, we would like to see paramedics out at the airport also, but it's going to be even longer before that happens. So there's a place for firefighters out at the airport if they don't promote, don't go to school. There's a possibility that none of that will happen. Maybe the airport's not available, and we have a firefighter, or a couple of them, that just simply can't or don't want to promote, and don't want to go to medic school. What would we do with those individuals? That would be something that we could use them as a fourth man. I don't think we could fire somebody because they didn't go to medic school. I don't think that would be a good thing. So we could put them on a particular unit that day as a fourth man. As an example, where I'm at, Station 314, it's a ladder truck, and to effectively use a ladder truck at a fire, it's really hard with three people. A fourth individual in that high-value area over there would be nice. So again, there's a place where that firefighter could be used if, years down the line... So again, there's a place where that firefighter could be used if, years down the line, we end up with an extra person. Now, this is what I do know for sure. If we had implemented this program when Station 312, the one on Elivato, was staffed, when we opened Station 315 and staffed it, we would be done. There would be paramedics on everything that we would have. And so I know it looks like it might be complicated. It might be a long ways away, but I think in a relatively quick amount of time, we could get there. And, see, that's the end of my presentation. That was pretty fast. Do you have any questions that I could...
Questions or comments from members of the council?
Dave, you mentioned that you talked to some of the other fire departments that have implemented on phased-in the paramedic program.
Yes.
And, you know, it looks to me like it would take some time. Do you have an answer on...
Yes. I actually have two people in the audience I know of that phased it in. I don't know if we want to ask their opinion, if I can put them on the spot. One is Tom Stout from Montclair. They phased it in, and then I noticed that the fire chief from Apple Valley is here. Put anybody on the spot. But they phased it, and I think Apple Valley took about five years, is that? In the back, about five years when you phased in the medic program? And it was ahead of schedule? Um, what about...
I couldn't hear the response from Apple Valley.
Five years.
Sorry, chief.
Just, I believe the question was, how long did it take us to phase ours in? Well, actually, we're, you know, the truth be known, we're still phasing ours in. With every station that we add, we always add paramedics. But to answer the question at hand, I would guesstimate probably four to five years that it took us from going from one station to having four stations staffed, our full-time station staff, so.
Doug, did you do it kind of the same way that Dave was describing when you...
Yeah, very similar. It just brought back memories of what we went through, certainly.
You know, whatever it was that you could hire off of that...
Right. Yeah, we did something very similar like Captain Wheaton's presentation. Okay?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
You do. That completes the items that we were charged with, other than the proposal from the county and city manager appropriately requested that proposal, so I would...
Thank you, Councilman Cabralis. The council had directed staff to request a formal proposal from the County of San Bernardino to provide fire suppression services along with an option of providing paramedic coverage on the suppression services. When this first item first came up from the city council, we contacted the county and indicated that the council had expressed an interest in receiving a proposal from the county. And the response back was, please don't ask us unless you're serious. We are going to, if asked, we are going to put a tremendous amount of work and effort into this proposal. So the item actually did go back to the city council again. This city council did formally, in an open meeting, 5-0, request a formal proposal from the county. And so we contacted the county in writing, let them know that the city council had requested the proposal. There were a series of meetings, certainly with department heads, director of finance, fire chief, deputy city manager, and we outlined the nature of the proposal that we were requesting from the county. It was primarily a proposal to provide suppression service that would replace the suppression service that we currently have. The city would retain ownership of the equipment. The county then also included an alternative to, for additional cost, to add the paramedic onto the three-man engines. And then also, they provided an alternative bid to provide air rescue firefighting coverage out at SCLA. I would like to compliment the county on, they did follow through on their commitment to make a complete effort on this proposal without making any comments about the merit of the proposal. Just the level of detail and professionalism and quality of the work is as good as I've seen in any proposal. It's very easy to understand, and there's a complete backup as to how they came to all of their numbers. Their proposal is comprehensive for fire suppression services and paramedic, if that is the choice of the city. Currently, our budgeting process in the city is not comprehensive. And so in order to, as pointed out in the county proposal, in order to ensure that it was an apples-to-apples comparison, city staff has also then analyzed our budgetary costs on a financial standpoint of view so that the numbers are in apple-to-apple comparison. And our staff will be prepared to present those numbers at the end of the county proposal. And so with the permission of the city council, I would ask Fire Chief or whoever he designates from the county to walk through their proposal.
By the way, while he's walking up here, I just want to let you know that, and I mentioned to Dave Wheaton and three other of you in there, that I'm, as we're sitting at this meeting right now, I'm totally open to both retaining our fire department as is and building on that platform or the county's proposal. They're both equal weight in my mind right now as one member of this council. That's all I'm going to tell you right now. This is a serious proposal, and I'm going to give you a serious listen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to come here today and share the county fire proposal. It is a proposal we're very proud of. We did put a lot of effort into it, and I appreciate your comments on it. With us tonight, I have my deputy chief, Dan Worrell. I have our assistant chief in charge of operations, Tim Sapick, as well as the division chief, Tim Wessel, who did a lot of the work on here. And again, for those of you who don't know me, my name's Pat Denon. I am the fire chief for the county as well as a county fire warden, as well as many other titles and things that I do throughout the community. I've been a resident of the high desert since '79 and was actually with Victorville Fire for a couple of years as a volunteer back in the Bob Wilson disaster preparedness days. So I do appreciate the opportunity to showcase county fire. I do also compliment the fact that you are asking these tough questions and you're looking at the entire picture of what options are available. And county fire is simply an option. This isn't what I would want to consider a hostile takeover, as we've heard and read in different venues that are available. We're just simply an option that you can consider. And I consider these folks friends of mine. They're in the fire service. We're all equal when it comes to, you know, if you ask me if I'm a fire chief, the answer's no, I'm a firefighter. That's where I come from, knowing many of these folks for years and years. Just a quick snapshot of county fire. You've got the detail on us, but we are a large department. We operate from 71 facilities around the county. We operate, our first due area is about 19,000 square miles. It's huge in comparison to what you would consider a typical city or fire district. And with that comes the challenges of supporting that. So, but we also operate a number of city contracts, Atlano and Hesperia, Grand Terrace, Needles, and Fontana contract. And we do have every setting from the urban and rural to the mountain communities, to the valleys, to the deserts that we operate in. And again, county fire does not solicit contracts with fire districts or cities. We only do it if we have an official request from the governing board and have it in writing. And we do that for a couple of reasons, because we want to produce a product that is easy and functional, but some, a product that we're proud of. And we don't want to waste our time, your time. We don't want labor unions battling back and forth trying to decide if it's a bargaining chip, if they're serious. And we only do it in case, in the cases that we are officially asked in writing. And again, in a nutshell, we were asked to do an apples-and-apples comparison, which was difficult simply because of the different budgeting methods used between the city and the county. We're also asked to look at the cost of a three-person ALS engine company, a four-person ALS engine company, your airport operations, as well as line items for the one-time expenditures that were needed for paramedic program startups, and then some of the other one-time items that would need to be done in order to conform within the county fire system, for example, breathing apparatus. We have a different type of breathing apparatus, and because of federal fit testing regulations, we don't have the option of having multiple types of breathing apparatus. So there would be a one-time cost for some of those other things as well. But we here, we are here on a very friendly basis. This is not designed to make anyone uncomfortable. We're just simply here to offer an option to your issues within the city. A couple of things that you did not see in the contract, one of which is what we would like to see as some sort of negotiated language, that if we in fact do contract, that we have a period of time where there's no cancellation, a one, I mean, a three-to-five-year window where we enter into this contract in good faith with the understanding that we're going to be in it for a few years. We're not going to go through all this employment change and all of the vehicle registration changes and all of the dispatching and computer-aided mapping program changes that we'd have to go through with the intent to have you just exercise the one-year cancellation clause. So we would ask that you would consider that as we go through the negotiation. The other concern that I think is a huge concern for both my labor side as well as the Victorville firefighter labor side is who's going where and when? And are we going to do this big shuffle and move everybody out of the city and move all the county fire guys in and sweep in and take over town? That's not our intent. Our intent is to negotiate that with city staff after we get the direction from the board or from the city council and with the membership of that group to include our labor folks, which we have a phenomenal relationship with our labor management group, our IFF Local 935, President Brett Henry and his E-Board staff. And so I have a commitment to them that we will work together and satisfy the needs of both labor management and the city as we proceed. So I would just ask that we consider those. Some of the comments were made that if you look at Victor, if you look at Atlano and Hesperia, who was there then and who's there now? Most of the people that were there that did move all had the option of transferring back after a one-year timeframe. Most chose not to. Some promoted because they had opportunities they didn't have in their existing departments and have now gone on and promoted a couple of times and in some cases, three times since the Hesperia contract. So it gives a lot of opportunity, it gives people a chance to go other places within the county, and then they experience other things, they like it, and they stay. So we'll certainly entertain those discussions as long as it's an upfront understanding that those discussions will include our labor folks from Local 935 with city staff and county fire management. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Division Chief Tim Wessel. He's got a PowerPoint presentation on our proposal. And at the end of that, I can either take a couple of questions on my opening comments now, or I will come back with Chief Wessel at the end and entertain any other questions. I may also call on some of my subject matter experts if we need somebody else. So any questions for me at this point?
Questions? Comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Make sure I operate this properly. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Tim Wessel. I'm the division chief for the North Desert Division of San Bernardino County Fire Department. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the PowerPoint here tonight on county fire. It'll be an overview of what we provide throughout the county, as well as towards the end of the PowerPoint, it'll talk specifically about Victorville. I assume you guys have this on your screen? Yes, okay, great. County Fire, we are a full-service fire agency, fire, rescue, EMS, ALS ambulance, hazmat. We do things on a regional delivery basis. We serve over 500,000 residents in 64 communities, five cities and towns. We service an area 18,821 square miles. In 2007, county fire responded to 53,165 incidents. We currently have 62 fire stations open. We have over 900 fire personnel and over 250 non-fire personnel. This is the San Bernardino County Fire Department's mission statement, and we believe in a community-based, all-risk emergency services organization. We're dedicated to the health and well-being of the citizens of San Bernardino County through a balance of regionalized services, delivery, and accountability to the local communities. Our service motto is duty, honor, and community. The vision statement for county fire is committed to providing the premier fire services in Southern California. And our standard of commitment is where courage, integrity, and service meet. County Fire Administration, the fire rescue operations are run out of regional divisions. There are four of those, and we also have a training division that handles training, safety, and EMS. We have support services, where we have vehicle service, maintenance, the warehouse, facilities maintenance, communications, the dispatch, and our computer networks. We have community safety, prevention, and hazmat. And we also have an office of emergency services with county fire. Talk about the county, just to give you a little overview of what the different divisions are. The bright yellow up there is the North Desert Division, and that is where Victorville would fall within. To the lower right corner, kind of a tannish color, is South Desert Division. To the lower left corner is the Valley Division. And then sort of in the middle of that lower section is our Mountain Division. As you can see, it's a rather large county that we cover, a lot of area that we have to cover. Some of the pictures you see up there are just some of our different pieces of equipment that we have throughout the county. Our fire and rescue services, we have over 125 fire apparatus, both structural and wildland engines. We operate squads, patrols, water tenders, ambulances, hazardous materials units, fire boats, fire dozers. Not listed on there is, we also operate snow cats for our mountain divisions. Personnel are trained to both state and national standards. We currently have 13 advanced life support ambulances within county fire that run with paramedics. We have three basic life support ambulances that run with strictly EMTs. We have one boat ambulance that runs out at Lake Havasu. And we have ALS engine companies in the communities of Fontana, DeVeau, Mentone, Atlano, Hesperia, Spring Valley Lake, Phelan, Lake Arrowhead, Joshua Tree, and Yucca Valley. And recently, we added the community of Hellendale and Silver Lakes. Our fire rescue and services, training, EMS, and safety division, we have over 150,000 student hours per year with our personnel. We have a comprehensive state-certified drill ground down in San Bernardino. We have two state-of-the-art classrooms. We provide safety officer coverage for our larger incidents within county fire's jurisdiction with our training officers. San Bernardino County Fire maintains the San Bernardino County Fire Chief's video library. And we also have the air crash rescue training center, the joint facility that was recently built down at the old Norton Air Force Base. In the technical rescue field, we also do urban search and rescue, confined space response. We have over 50 personnel trained in swift water response. We have 65 personnel trained as heavy rescue technicians. We also operate three heavy rescue units and one medium rescue within county fire. The medium rescue is located out in Yucca Valley. We have a heavy rescue in Hesperia, heavy rescue in Fontana, and a heavy rescue in Lake Arrowhead. We also operate two bulldozers. They're fire-rated. They can go anywhere within the county as well as out of county upon request. We have two transporting vehicles. These, both these dozers are available countywide, and they're available not only during fire season, but also during the winter season when we can use them to take care of some flooding issues or whatever may be happening in certain communities. As far as helicopters go, we have an arrangement with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department for mutual aid, on a mutual aid request for initial attack on both, on our wildland-urban interface fires. They all, may also be used for personnel transport. We have on numerous occasions used the sheriff's helicopters to transport personnel out to... We have on numerous occasions used the sheriff's helicopters to transport personnel out towards the Baker area on larger traffic accidents where we need to get personnel out there in a hurry. The sheriffs will come to one of the stations, they'll pick up the crew and they'll transport them to the scene of the accident. In our community safety division, under fire prevention, we handle fire prevention, public education, arson investigation and public information. Our hazardous materials division handles COOPA for the county and cities with the exception of the city of Victorville. We handle emergency response. We have a county hazmat team that works under the community safety division that responds in addition to our hazardous materials teams that we have in our fire stations. Handle field services, site remediation and local oversight programs, household hazardous waste for county and cities. And there was also a homeland security grant program where we acquired a North Desert Response Vehicle. Under our dispatch area, we're a member of the CONFIRE Joint Powers Authority. The JPA operates the County Communications Center out of Rialto. This is down adjacent to the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Dispatch Center and also the County EOC. We provide computer-aided dispatch, MIS, GIS, mapping and commuter network, computer network services. And CONFIRE serves as the San Bernardino County's operational area dispatch for fire and medical mutual aid throughout Southern California and at times throughout California. We're also, CONFIRE, or excuse me, CONFIRE is also on the ReadyNet system to know what the availability is at different hospitals as far as if we're going to have bed delays and such. We can get that right through our dispatch system. Our service center, under vehicle services, the fire apparatus, we're developing 20-bay facility as well as servicing all of County Fire's vehicles. We also have contracts with the cities of Colton, Loma Linda and Rialto to service all of their fire apparatus and chief officer vehicles. We have 22 mechanics who are all ASE certified to the master level. And we provide preventative maintenance, pump repairs, modifications to all over 700 vehicles, both county and the contracts. Our warehouse handles all of our safety gear, supplies, tools and equipment. And on top of that, they also provide incident support. So when we get a large incident, should we need lunches, should we need water, Gatorade, more hose, thermogel to, for large fires, our warehouse provides that service. They'll load it up on a flatbed truck and bring it right out to the scene of the incidents. We also have facilities maintenance that handles small repairs at the fire stations, helps to take care of the service and the training center, the EOC and our communications center.
Brett, your warehouse is on-call all the time for any incident that's active?
We have a person on-call 24 hours a day. All we have to call them in and they would have to respond. If it's after-hours, they would respond from home back to the warehouse. And usually, we, we can have them on the road within an hour, if not less. Our Office of Emergency Services, the operational area lead, County Fire is the operational lead agency for the area. They are the coordinating committee for all the counties and the cities within San Bernardino County. They help to acquire federal and state funding through grants. They manage the EOC and all the computer links that go with that. And they also coordinate the MAST, which is the Mountain Area Safety Task Force, and the FAST, which is the Flood Area Safety Task Force. After all the fires that we've had in the mountains and such, and of course with the very disastrous flood that hit in Waterman Canyon and took the lives of the folks at the camp, the FAST was developed so that we can take appropriate action when, when the rain is predicted to be such that it's going to cause some flooding, we can be ahead of the game. And that's all set up to work off of different weather reports and warnings that we should The County Disaster Council, we, the, our OES folks handle the emergency management plan and of course, continuity of government and the county disaster training. They coordinate and hold the exercises and the SEMS training throughout the county with all the different cities and, and local areas. Our internal support services, budget finance, currently we're managing 32 fire districts and CSAs plus three city contracts. CONFIRE GPA, the, I knew I'd forget this one. The, that second, that last JPA is actually for the new ARF Center, the Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Center that was built down at Norton. Handle purchasing and then also ambulance billing with over $4 million in annual billings. We have our human resource department that handles personnel and negotiations, recruitment and payroll. And our information services handle software development and support as we're, as well as hardware installation and support. County Fire Department has cooperative agreements with the California Master Mutual Aid Agreement, automatic aid agreements with local fire departments and military departments. We have an agreement with California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, the U.S. Forest Service, the Bureau of Land Management, National Park Service, the Bureau of Indian Affairs and service contracts for fire vehicle services with Loma Linda, Colton and Rialto, as I mentioned before. So, to get to the city of Victorville. Service levels, we would provide regional service, a regional delivery system for fire rescue and EMS. This would maintain 16 personnel on duty 24 hours a day. This staffs five engines with a captain, an engineer and a firefighter configuration. This does not include Station 319 at SCLA. Provides for improved fire personnel coverage and maintains and enhances incident response times, provides for cost containment and employment for 48 positions. Provides for dispatch, GIS mapping, records management system, network computer system, provides arson investigation services, provides vehicle repair services and provides for fiscal and payroll services. This is a response map that we put together at four, six and eight-minute response times using both the Victorville stations and the surrounding stations from within the county to give you an idea of how response times would look. There were some questions about including Station 37. I apologize, I was unable to put the new map in, but I do have a large map with me that I can show you after, if you would like to see it, that takes Station 37 out and actually adds Station 315 into the mix. I just received that map this, this morning, but I've been on the Big Horn Fire since 5:00 AM this morning, so I apologize for not having that in the PowerPoint.
So the, the gray colors designate the time intervals from four to six minutes?
Yes, the different shades, correct. These of course are your current fire stations and their locations. Currently in the city of Victorville, you have eight fire engines or what we call type-one engines, three brush engines, two ladder trucks, a water tender, six aircraft rescue firefighter, firefighting units, one incident support unit, a command vehicle and two trailers. Okay, meat and potatoes. This is the proposal and for your current level of staffing. This proposal provides for the equivalent level of service currently being delivered by the Victorville Fire Department. The four fire stations will be staffed daily with 15 full-time employees, five captains, five engineers and five firefighters assigned to your five engine companies. Each unit will provide basic life support services and the fire stations will be supervised by a battalion chief who will be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days per week and respond to all incidents requiring a chief officer within the city of Victorville. The annual projected cost for this proposal, exclusive of one-time startup cost, is the $9,892,843 that you see. And I know that you all have the proposal books and it gives a much more detailed breakdown of where that number came from. What we're calling alternate proposal number one is three-person ALS staffing. And this alternate proposal provides for an increased level of service above what is currently being delivered by the Victorville Fire Department. The four fire stations will be staffed daily with 15 full-time employees, five captains, five engineers and five firefighter paramedics assigned to your five engine companies. Each unit will provide advanced life support services and the fire stations will be supervised by a battalion chief who will be on duty 24 hours per day, seven days per week and respond to all incidents requiring a chief officer within the city of Victorville. The annual projected cost for alternate number one, exclusive of one-time startup cost, is $10,052,835. And once again, there's a, a breakdown of how those costs were, come to in, in your big book. What we're calling alternate proposal number two is four-person ALS staffing. This option provides for an increased level of service above what is currently being delivered by the Victorville Fire Department. The four fire stations will be staffed daily with 20 full-time employees, five captains, five engineers, five firefighter paramedics and five firefighters assigned to your five engine companies. Each unit will provide advanced life support services and the fire station will be supervised by a battalion chief who will be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week and respond to all incidents requiring a chief officer within the city of Victorville. The annual projected cost for alternate number two, exclusive of one-time startup cost, is $12,196,894. And once again, there is a full breakdown in your book. The last thing that I have for you is our SCLA proposal. This proposal provides for the equivalent level of service currently being delivered by the Victorville Fire Department at SCLA. The one fire station will be staffed daily with three full-time employees, one captain, one engineer and one firefighter, assigned to staff, the assigned apparatus at the station. The crew assigned to this station will provide basic life support services and the fire station will be supervised by the battalion chief who will be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days per week and respond to all incidents requiring a chief officer within the city of Victorville. The annual projected cost for the SCLA proposal is $1,500,655. And that's the end of my PowerPoint. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, or I can bring Chief Denon back up and you can ask questions of him.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I have a question. How, what would be the, the timeframe, say for the three-person engine company, the paramedics, to bring them on board?
How long?
How long would it be?
Well, there's some things that are dependent on, on that, the availability of ALS equipment, the lead time to buy the equipment that we need to, to, to convert to ALS. Also, Virginia Hastings from ISMA is here today, there'd be an engine company inspection process that we'd have to go through. But we are well-prepared to implement a program by July 1st if that's the desire of the city council.
Further questions or comments?
Just one question, maybe two questions. On the mapping program you have, is that within the units also? In other words, when the call goes out, it maps to the unit?
No, we, we don't have that same capability the sheriff has in their vehicles with the mobile data terminals. We currently don't have that. But what we do have is, is we do have a mapping, a software program and all of the maps are in books and all of your pagers when your call comes out for dispatch, it not only has the County Fire map reference, but it has a Thomas Brothers map reference as well.
And when you dispatch out a medical call for traffic collision or whatever, do you immediately go to AMR with that call also? Do they get it the same time you get it? What, how do you do that?
Um, in some cases, it depends. And I'd have to refer to AMR to almost answer that question. In some cases, they have our pager and if it hits that particular engine company and AMR is the provider for that area, they get the page the same time the engine company gets the page. We also do that with a couple of other ambulance companies in the area. Otherwise, they have an intercom line, they just simply take the call as they input it into the, into the computer. Someone else is on the intercom notifying the ambulance transport provider.
The last question I have right at this point is, we obviously have our own dispatch system up here.
Yes.
They do a great job.
Yes, they do.
They dispatch Apple Valley, Big Bear. Has there been any thought process on what we would do with that dispatch center?
Oh yeah, that's, that's a huge issue and there's a lot of implication as a result of this contract on where the RFPA would end up. And I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of the RFPA, but there are a number of options. One of the options is for us is to minimize the one-time startup fee if you came to County Fire because of the fact that you're on a GE 800 system versus the rest of the counties, I shouldn't say the rest of the county. Other county departments are on the Motorola 800 system, which are non-compatible frequencies. So there would be a startup cost to convert to the Motorola radio. We've got a number of options available for that to minimize that impact. But one thought would be to go back to the old days and go to VHF radio, which you already have the VHF radio, so there, you'll minimize that, that transition cost. There's downsides to that as well as upsides, but the, the impact we need to try to minimize too, and quite frankly, I'm glad Doug's here, is to minimize the impact that this causes on Apple Valley's fire district. Because of the formation of the JPA years ago, it used to be Wrightwood Fire District, Lucerne Valley, Barstow, Apple Valley, Victorville and, and Adelanto and Hesperia. Now, County Fire has evolved and grown and contracts have expanded and our fire districts has changed over the years as well as our CONFIRE dispatch center. The JPA is getting smaller and smaller. And so we certainly, as we were with the Hesperia contract, we want to minimize the impact to Apple Valley's fire district and certainly to the, to the JPA. So a couple of options, looking at the VHF system, looking at a transitional timeframe or even creating a separate dispatch center under CONFIRE that then gives us the latitude to have our Rialto dispatch center that handles the bulk of the valley and the mountains calls, for example. And then we have the Desert Regional Dispatch Center that handles the North Desert and some of the other areas. So there's a, there's a few options that we'd like to look at. And then potentially, we could simply become a member of the JPA and continue with what we have now, other than the fact that we need to be sensitive to the radios, that we don't have incompatibility within County Fire. We did that for a year with the Hesperia transition where we ran the GE, GE system and the Motorola system patched into the VHF system and it just didn't work. It was a firefighter safety issue and we were glad when we finally transitioned off of it. Not that either system is good or bad, they just simply don't talk.
Well, I guess as I, as I asked that question about there's, there's staffing at that dispatch center also, which I'm concerned about.
Sure.
I'm concerned about my employees.
Absolutely.
And you know, they're, they're great dispatchers, they know what they're doing and, and I've always enjoyed having them out there. So that would be one of my concerns is what we, what we do with them. I don't know, I guess Doug would have to be part of that answer too.
I would, I would entertain that after we decide the direction that the council wants to go, that we enter into that negotiation process and try to figure out the best result. We currently have some openings in our dispatch center that we could consider, but the bottom line is by virtue of this contract, it adds another 12,000 calls a year annually to my workload and we're going to have to figure out how to, how to absorb that workload as well. And it might just be the right time for us to say, CONFIRE needs to split off and have half of our dispatch workload in the valley, half of the workload in the desert, then when we all talk about when the earthquake cracks Cajon Pass and we've got regional capabilities on both sides of the pass. So it may be time that we have that discussion.
Did I miss it in, in here, or maybe it isn't here? Did we pick up hazmat in our proposal too, or is that?
The hazmat compliance side of the house is not part of this proposal. Planning and engineering, project conditioning permits, hazmat, the COOPA function, all stays with the city of Victorville.
First, when you, you mentioned a number of mutual aid, there, they went pretty fast there. Is there anything that you do that we don't do in terms of mutual aid, aside from major forest fire type of activity?
Uh, the city of Victorville is part of the statewide master mutual aid system. They are part of what we call Region Zone Four Mutual Aid System, which Chief Qualls is the Zone Four Coordinator and they do participate with the mutual aid system. The question would be, how often do we all respond and do we all run every time somebody pushes the button? And the answer is no, we only respond when we have the capability and the staffing behind to take care of home base. And Chief Becker's been very good about taking care of home base before he just automatically sends something on a strike team and leaves town. So that is, but everybody is a part of the statewide master mutual aid agreement.
Now, those helicopters you had mentioned, are they, I know obviously the firefighting aspect, but is the helicopter also for medical emergency?
Yeah, the sheriff currently has six of what they call the A-Star helicopters. Those are all set up to have water dropping capability. They also have three other Huey helicopters, one's called a Super Huey, one's a 212 and one's a regular Huey. one's a regular Huey. Two of those are set up to do medical air transportation, they're also set up to do hoist rescue. But they're also contracted with CAL FIRE annually, so they're not always available. But the six water dropping helicopters, the A-Stars are available throughout the year, and one of the rescue ships is available always throughout the year, as well as your Mercy Air Medical Air Ambulance Provider that's located both here in Victorville and in Asparia.
Sometime when you would use a helicopter water drop for a municipal?
Sure.
Say, one of our big boxes that might be caught fire?
It's a tool in our toolbox. We just need to remember that an aviation asset, in my mind, is the most dangerous piece of equipment we've got at our fingertips. And if we're going to use it for something, it better be a darn good reason to use it. But I can't imagine using it on a commercial building. You've got a phenomenal fleet of fire trucks, you're surrounded by a couple other ladder trucks in the region. But you do have the river bottom. The river bottom burns quite well several times a year. I've been stomping through the river bottom my whole career, and it isn't going to change until the river bottom goes away, and that's not going to happen either, so.
I have a couple of questions. Currently, do you run three- or four-man squads in the county?
Well, we do a number of things, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I want to help answer the question on how we transition to a paramedic program. And just like Chief Quals, we're not done yet either. We have 30 stations that have paramedics on units, and we have five that still don't. We have one city that we still serve that the city does not choose to have paramedics. They simply have made a business decision, a financial decision, that they are happy with the response times that they get and the provider that's, AMR that's providing the ALS coverage on the ambulance, and they're comfortable with what they've got. But we do have stations that have just one full-time captain that run with limited-term employees and paid call firefighters. We have stations that just have two people on them. We have engines that have three people on them. We have engines that have four. We run one squad in the valley. We run ALS engine companies and paramedic ambulances generally everywhere else. So we've got every cafeteria planned staffing pattern you can think of, and I think I share this with everybody in the room. As a fire chief, my goal is to achieve the same thing the union wants. I want four people on every fire truck, I want five people on a truck company, I want two on a squad, two on an ambulance, and that's what we should have for firefighter safety. The question is, how do you get there? And the answer is, you get there one step at a time. You may not be able to leap into that scenario day one, first time out of the gate, but at the end, that's what we should be shooting for, because nationally, the statistics show firefighter death occurs because of lack of manpower, cardiology issues, and traveling to and from incidents. And we need to focus on that's where we need to go. I don't want to come here in short change and say, you can get by with a two-man engine company or two-man squad or three-man engine company. You need four people. You need five on a truck, you need two on ambulances and squads. But the question is, when can you get there and how can you afford it? And that's the long-range policymaking, master planning, that the responsibility falls with the elected body.
Assuming a three-man squad in Victorville, rough approximation, how long would it take to get paramedics on?
Should you contract with us? We stand ready to make that happen the day the contract is implemented, short of the permitting process and the availability of ALS equipment. But we do have ALS equipment, reserve equipment in our other divisions now. We could facilitate that in a rapid timeframe.
Tell me a little bit about the experience with the change that occurred in Asparia and Adelanto. How do you view the integration of the troops, if you will, that process?
Well, I view it in two ways. In some cases, it was a win-win across the board, and some of the personnel integrated extremely well, absolutely live and breathe for county fire every day, just simply because they have a new opportunity to promote and train and go on and do things where in the current, or in the former chain of command they had, they had a lot of senior leadership in captains' positions that weren't retiring for a number of years, and those entry-level medics only saw their entry-level medic position. They would be in that for 10, 15, 18 more years before other people promoted and retired out. So there were some that really enjoyed the opportunity to come into county fire and have since gone on to be very successful. There are some that came in very bitter. Some of them lost a lot of leave time, to be very honest. And again, that's what you'll all find out about me. Careful what you ask for, because if it's up here, it's going to come out. But when they left Asparia employment, that's what they literally did. They left their employment with the city of Asparia, and they became new employees with county fire. And under your current MOU provisions, you have an opportunity to cash out their leave time or sick leave. It may or may not have a formula, but their vacation does and their holiday time does. You generally cash them out on those leaves. But sick leave, it's usually either zero or it's a percentage. And in Asparia's case, their MOU said zero. You don't get any sick leave. So you had an employee that was very productive, phenomenal member of the community, had 3,000 hours of sick leave on the books, because he came to work every day, he was an upstanding, perfect employee, and yet he was going to lose that. So I was able to negotiate back with the city of Asparia to give them at least a percentage of the sick leave, and that's what I would have asked, that as we go through this transitional process, we look at all the provisions of the MOU to make sure that it says, and I appreciate Councilman Hunter's comment about that you care for your employees, because I've often said, and I know Mr. Roberts has heard me say, and I know my staff has said, our greatest asset is our employees. I don't care what your fire stations or your fire trucks look like, if you don't have good employees, you don't have a darn thing. So I do appreciate those comments about how was the transition, because some liked it, some didn't. Some were typical human behavior, just walked the line, and they went with whatever the path of least resistance was. If the greater number was getting the benefit, that's where they went. If they felt like arguing for the day, they dropped below and they fell with this group and argued for the day. And it's just simply, people don't like change. They came to work for you because it's the city of Victorville. So now your policy decision is, if you're looking at another option and it's county fire, they're going to have to go through a change, a mental philosophical change and a change of trust. They have to trust us. And that's what our labor group has found, and that's why we are so successful, because we do not only trust labor, but labor trusts management as well. And the only thing I could say at this point is, they would have to trust us to be a good employer, and we are proven to be a good employer, I can tell you that. I'm very proud of that fact.
If the council were to make a decision to negotiate with county fire, is it in the cards to create some type of what I would call at least desert or Victor Valley-wide protection for some period of time? I mean, there are firefighters that work here, I mean, they live in various communities around here, and some of them don't even live in the state. But my concern is for those who are what I'm going to call home-based in the Victor Valley, would there be some opportunity to create some safety net for them in terms of not getting shipped to Trona or?
Trona's nice this time of year.
I've lived in the desert all my life, and that's not a truth.
Mr. Mayor, I can offer you this, that we will do our very best to accommodate special needs, and like I told city manager as well, we will be reactionary to the contract negotiation components that you put forward. So if, in fact, that's something you want to see in the contract, then we can have that discussion. But like I prefaced earlier, I stand committed to local 935 and the agreements that we have with them, and I would just ask that we all come to the table and have these discussions at the same time together, so nobody's left out during the negotiation process. The reason we're successful is because we allow them into these kind of discussions to create that element of trust and success ultimately where we are today.
Well, I don't know where the council would go. I would just tell you that from my perspective, if there was a way to give some level of confidence, some comfort to firemen, that they don't, at least for some reasonable period of time, have to worry about getting shipped to some?
We can certainly have, yeah, we can certainly have that discussion. Trona's not staffed full-time, so that one's not on the books, but Big River and Needles are, so you never know. But we can have that discussion. One thing that, again, I mentioned earlier is, when we did move some folks out of Asparia in the previous contract, they were allowed to bid back in one year if they so chose. And we can still look at that, too. I think, quite frankly, it's healthy to move people out for a period of time to experience their new employer and understand how we work and operate, and learn that bit of county fire culture, just like you have a city of Victorville culture. And then if they choose to bid back, we can let them obviously bid back based on their seniority. But we can also have that discussion and see where it is. And you mentioned comfort zone, and I'll share this with you, that my folks have heard me say many times, success lies just beyond your comfort zone. So if you want to go outside of your comfort zone for that year, experience county fire, and then come back, then that's the choice that we'll allow them to have based on our negotiations.
Going back to the Asparia and Adelanto experience for a minute, were there any economies of scale that helped reduce costs from when it was standalone Asparia Fire Department or Adelanto Fire Department versus meshing in with your purchasing opportunities and your quantity discounts and things like that?
There's a percentage of cost savings with our purchasing aspect of it tagging onto engine bids and some of those things. But the one thing that I can share with you that was a cost savings, firefighter captains and engineers are not cost savings. Employees are employees. They're going to cost you either what you pay them or what we pay, there's no difference within a margin, or whatever that pay scale is. But personnel is personnel. But when it comes to the way we bid our contracts, we generally, and in Asparia and Adelanto the same way, we don't bill you for three battalion chiefs and a deputy chief or a division chief and a fire chief. We simply bill based on a percentage. And in Adelanto, we bill them for one full battalion chief and a percentage of the division chief or just one full. So we bill them for one battalion chief, yet there's three assigned there, so two of them we pay for. And in Asparia's case, they had a fire chief and they had three division chiefs, and so where we save you money is in the overhead level. But overall, the cost of the contract, you saw the numbers, we may not be your cheapest option. I just want to make sure you understand, we are simply an option. We may not be your cheapest option. But we do save you cost in apparatus purchase because we buy several engines a year, we tag onto other bids, other departments tag onto our bids, we save at the purchasing level on a number of other things. But where we primarily save you is in, even though fire prevention, hazmat, some of those are not part of the contract, those are those services that we generally provide that don't have a cost impact to the contract. So you'll get our safety officers, you get the chief officer, you'll get me, if that's the case, you'll get the deputy chief. In fact, we ran the numbers just to see how county fire demographics fit up here in the desert, and we've got over 100 firefighters, full-time career firefighters. We only queried firefighter, engineer, and captain. We've got over 100 residents here in the high desert. We've got over half of our chief officers that live here in the high desert. So a large part of county fire suppression ranks live and spend money and work and, as Chief Sapik says, recreate right here. A lot of them here in the city of Victorville.
We've had phenomenal success with our contract with the county sheriff's department.
Right.
Are there any similarities between the budgetary process and the allocation and sharing of cost between the way you do it in your department compared to the way they do it in the sheriff's department?
We're just a little bit different, and it's kind of one of those hidden secrets most people don't realize. The sheriff works for the, he's elected official, obviously, and I'm not, I'm simply on a whiteboard. But we are special districts. We really aren't the county of San Bernardino. We are a fire district managed by the Board of Supervisors. They are our governing board. So we do budgets a little bit different because we are not subject to the general fund. Even though we get a small allocation of money from the general fund, we get 8.3 million of our $132 million budget comes from the general fund. But all of ours is generated from either property tax or ambulance revenue, fees, cost recovery, some of those things. So we do our budget a little bit different simply because we are not a general fund department as the sheriff's department is under the county budgeting system. Yet there are similarities. For the most part, the answer's yes. The other part of the question is, we're a little bit different because we're funded different and governed a little bit different. But there are similarities in cost sharing.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thanks. I certainly do appreciate the opportunity to be here with you.
Don't go far.
We're not going.
I think there's some more dialogue that's going to occur. Chief? Rudy?
Well, I would request now that we do have a city station on the different levels, so the council can make some comparison.
Thank you, Councilman Carrion, all of us, members of the council. As stated in the proposal from the county, it is a comprehensive proposal. It does provide all levels of service, including human resources, information services, finance, payroll, risk management, and all support services. As the council is aware, the city of Victorville has not used cost allocation, budgeting, or financial record-keeping. In fact, I have been taken to task by some members of this council for the fact that we do not do cost allocation, financial reporting, and so the chickens have come home to roost on that one, because now when it was the request to the council that we do an apples-to-apples comparison, the numbers were not readily available. Our fire department budget is only the portion of the basic services and does not provide any of those necessary support services and comprehensive services. So the department heads of the city have been going through, doing an extensive analysis of each one of those costs, what are the human resources costs, the IS costs, finance, payroll, risk management. We have not included all of the various departments, but those are the major departments where there is a significant cost impact. Each one of those department heads did an extensive analysis of those costs. They were all presented to the Director of Finance, and the Director of Finance has scrubbed those numbers over very carefully, looked at detailed analysis of the fire department budgets, historical expenditures, and scrubbed those numbers down to what we think, in my opinion, I think is a conservative estimate, but certainly a very detailed and defensible one. We have included in, by the way, that the issue was brought up on compensation for accumulated sick leave and vacation leave, and our costs do include compensation, full compensation for those accumulated leaves. And so with the council's permission, I'd like to call up our Director of Finance, who will make a presentation on the apples-to-apples cost comparison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, citizens and fellow employees. Thank you for the introduction. I am John Sullivan, the Director of Finance of the city. And in connection with the paramedic proposal, I was asked by our city manager to work with other department heads in order to compile data estimating our costs for the implementation of a paramedic program within the city of Victorville. Apologize if those in the room cannot read everything in here, but I'll go through it very quickly. In connection with the analysis of the feasibility of the implementation of a paramedic program for the city of Victorville, the city council requested that staff evaluate all options that would result in such implementation. Staff determined that the implementation of the program involved two basic alternatives: A, implementation of the program within the existing fire suppression and administration programs; or B, outsource fire suppression in its entirety to the county of San Bernardino, which has in place a fully functional paramedic program pursuant to a proposal that has been received by the city of Victorville. Staff was requested to prepare an analysis of the fiscal impact to the city under each option. The following sections of this report? Oh, good. Thank you. The following sections of this report are intended to respond to that request. For purposes of this analysis? Back one? For purposes of this analysis, the following basic methodology has been followed. Option A is determine the projected cost of fire suppression and fire administration, Part One. Two, estimate the cost of the program if implemented as an adjunct to the above. And Three, include the cost adjustments to Item One that are estimated to be in place in fiscal 2008, 2009. And again, Option A is to implement it within our existing structures. Option B. Option B was to determine the estimated cost of fire suppression and fire administration, assuming that the county of San Bernardino assumes all or part of those costs associated with these activities. And then Item Two, determine the cost of the contract with the county of San Bernardino. The total of the components for each option represents the estimated cost to the city for a fire protection program that includes a paramedic program that is implemented as either an adjunct to existing programs or is implemented through outsourcing with the county of San Bernardino. And here's how we have approached this process. You will see in front of you, the council members can see this a little better than the audience, but we, this will start in just a moment, my little red blinker, you will see in front of you, we have our operating budgets for the fiscal year 2007, 2008.
It's working, but it won't do on that screen, it just absorbs it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Then I won't blind everyone. We analyzed the costs in two blocks. First of all, the First of all, costs that would be transferred and assumed under the city of San Bernardino. We have two columns. These columns up there are stationed for Station 311. We have the original budget, that is the budget numbers from our mid-year budget cycle. The second column related is called forecast. What we did is we went through and reviewed our actual expenditures during two periods, one through the end of February, the second through the end of April. We then analyzed what those cost trends were and used those to substitute our budget. As you know, mid-year budgets are done generally, started on November, December, and there are costs that became apparent after our mid-year budget was put together. In addition, in some cases, our budgets are conservative, sometimes we found out that they're off just a little bit. But as this schedule would indicate, the costs are reasonably close. Station 311, per the mid-year budget, had a budgeted cost of $2,256,000. Our most current forecast indicates it's going to be $2,485,000, slightly lower. But if you aggregate everything across these pieces of our budget, we are looking at a mid-year budget number of $6,141,000, and we are currently projecting that at year-end that number will have increased to $6,686,000. So essentially, this first calculation, our cost that would be transferred substantially in their entirety. The second part of the calculation include administration and other costs. Now, these are costs that are embedded within one or the other budgets, perhaps within fire, it includes elements from other departments, and not all of these costs would be transferred and assumed by a city, or by the county contract. And as you can see, the total direct costs of operation are $1,752,783. And again, that is the budget for administration. The forecast is, by June 30 of '08, that number will have increased to $1,833,771. But for this calculation, we wanted to determine if the contract was outsourced to the city, how much would we still retain in the administrative costs? And as you can see in this number, we would retain approximately $1,133,000 within the administration budget for fire within the city. There is another couple of numbers down below, I wonder if I can get the -- there we go. The city manager mentioned that we do not cost allocate the cost of support services across all boundaries. So in order to make an apples-to-apples comparison, we calculated what is the cost of the three primary support entities, or support funds within the city, and that is finance, information systems, and human resources. I will tell you, as Mr. Roberts mentioned, that these are conservative numbers. At the finance department, we estimated that of our budget, we spend approximately $65,000 of our budget related to supporting fire department activities. Our numbers were calculated essentially using all of the budgeted numbers, the expenditures. Our department is the one that issues all the checks, does the accounting, does the recording. And so the methodology was essentially to determine of the entire city budget, how much of those dollars in terms of costs, that's operating expenses and capital, how much are fire-related as compared to the entire city? So our number is about 2.7%, so it's a very small part of our budget. On information systems, we estimated on a conservative basis that that cost would be approximately $85,000. Now, some of the numbers that we got together originally showed a much higher number on an absolute full cost. We looked at that because included in the number would be software licensing, PC units, T1s, staff that actually spends their time doing and supporting fire stuff. But our effort was to be as conservative as possible and not to overload costs in the fire department. So we reduced that number to $85,000. On human resources, similar approach was taken. The $200,000 at first blush may appear to be high, but when we went and analyzed the functions of individuals in that department, we determined that there were approximately three individuals who spend between 30 and 40% of their time dealing strictly with fire department matters. That one cost element, their salaries allocated times roughly 35%, was about $150,000. So we added just a little bit for general allocation, not very much. So you will see on the column to the right, on the finance, we reduced that from $65,000 to $50,000. We did that assuming that instead of writing a number of checks and doing a number of things within the various fire department budgets, there's only one check written, and that is the monthly fee to the county of San Bernardino. On Exhibit C, what we attempted to put together is a cost comparison. We use the 2007, 2008 forecast of our costs, because that represents our most reasonable, most current estimate of costs. Then we determined what our revised costs would be if the contract was outsourced. And then we have a net change in costs. The first item in here is cost of direct activities transferred, $6,682,000. Obviously, that is what we currently project those costs to be. If they were all outsourced, then our resulting cost would be zero, so there's a net change of negative $6,682. The city's costs go down. Second item is the loss of emergency response recovery revenues. One thing that our fire department does is grant mutual aid to other entities, we send our folks out to help. We generally get money for that. Sometimes we can't get it all, we can't get it fast enough, but we do get the money. The figure was reviewed and provided by fire department management. The third one, which was discussed earlier tonight, the estimated cost of a paramedic program if implemented within our structures. Doug Robinson mentioned a general caption at $550,000. He also mentioned the fire paid call program elimination of $100,000. So that is a cost that would get us there, that would not be there with an outsource. Next, under administration costs, again, this refers to the prior exhibit. What is our cost of administration today? What would it be if it were outsourced? So what is the net differential? And again, same thing for the indirect costs, which are HR, finance, and IS. The next series of changes is a net change in risk management cost components. This is one of those departments where costs that may relate to the fire department end up in a different cost center, and in our case, risk management. Risk management pays for all of our insurance policies and of that nature. And they provided us with two pieces of information. First of all, there is approximately $162,200 of insurance deposit premiums that relate to general liability policy and employment practices. They actually repriced our existing insurance policies and with and without having fire department operations here, that is suppression, the ones that we are discussing. And they told us that if that were to change, your insurance premium would decline by $162,000. The second item relates to workers' comp claims in excess of deposit premiums. That is sort of a -- What that essentially is, is the dollar amount of claims paid in excess of the deposited premium that we give our risk pool every year. And that is, that $164,000 is an average over an 11-year period. The next item, Item F, is additional cost estimate for the proposed MOU. The current salary and benefits, to get to that number, we received the proposal from the union, and that proposal is made up primarily of three things, and this number is made up primarily of three items. The first item is 3.3% cost of living increase for all represented staff. The second is a, what we determined to be a 10% increase across the board in salaries for all represented staff based upon surveys. The request was that we do analysis of other cities, and we get, I think there were 15 other cities, we eliminate the bottom six, we take an average of the uppers, and that's where we would end up. We did determine that our, based upon our reading of that number, that our salaries are lower than the upper group that was requested in the survey. The terms of the proposed MOU did cap that at 10%, so we used the 10% number. The other item on there, $400,000, that is the funding of the cost of a retroactive pension benefit. Included within the proposed MOU is a request that the pension benefit with CalPERS be changed from 2% at 50% to 3% at 50%. Now, to determine what the cost impact would be requires a formal actuarial study. But we did such a study in 2005, and the study from CalPERS in 2005 was with only three stations, not four, with a population that was much smaller in terms of the workers, their salaries were much lower. And that study came back and said to us that essentially, if the change is made and applied retroactively, then your unfunded liability just increased by approximately $3.2 million. So that is a liability that you pick up, and for pension purposes, that liability is repaid to CalPERS. It's a prior service cost, it's repaid over a number of years. Now, today, we have more employees, we have salaries that have increased in the last three years, and so we are estimating that the unfunded liability from a retroactive application of the pension benefit increase is closer to $4 million. That may be a conservative number, it may be 4.1, 4.2 million, maybe a little bit higher. So for purposes of apples-to-apples, that is, what would it cost us to put the paramedic program within the city coupled with where we are at July 1st in dealing with these issues versus where would we be at July 1st if the county proposal were to be accepted based upon the proposals that we received both from the union representatives and from the county? As you can tell, it's just about a push. There's a very small differential between those two numbers, $38,000. Can we move down just a little bit on this spreadsheet? There is a one-time cost, which the chief for the county mentioned, and that is roughly a $684,000 item for equipment purchases. That item is primarily just, it's a one-time charge, so it's for equipment. We don't know how long that equipment will last or at what time we have to replace it, but that is a one-time cost. Attached to this document, which you can see, are costs included in the calculations. Again, this is the footnotes to these calculations. It explains essentially what I just explained by summarizing those notes. There we go, thank you. And that in a nutshell is where we came out. We did have a number of meetings with staff to go through the numbers to make sure that they're reasonable. We wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything. We wanted to make sure that this was as close as we could possibly get to apples-to-apples comparison of the two alternatives.
Questions or comments from members of the council?
Indirect cost number that you had up there, does that include litigation?
No, it does not include, it does not include the litigation that the city is presently in. The litigation, we have one number in here that may include part of the litigation. For administration, the forecast number for this year was $125,000, that was in the administration budget. The costs may be at that number, slightly below or slightly exceed, but it does not include any litigation, nor does it include any potential loss to the city as a result of an adverse finding in that litigation.
What about the risk issue again? We have a certain amount of protection from, I guess, a fire truck running into a car or something like that. Is there any kind of a net benefit or recognized benefit from the county's having the contract versus the city of Victorville?
Yes.
I just said, I saw the risk, I didn't quite understand if you dovetailed it into a number or not.
Okay, I'll go back to that. Let's see, do you see under Item E, $162,200, that is a insurance deposit premium for general liability and employment practices? We have a very good relationship with our insurance pool, they cover a lot of these coverages, and what they told us is that $162,200 would be the decrease in our insurance premium deposits made were this suppression function to be outsourced. So that is the savings that we would see. And of course, that is built into the county proposal as well. They have their own costs. We do not have detailed breakdowns on that, but it's in there.
Questions or comments?
A question, the funding cost for the retroactive pension benefit, that's, we're not in negotiations yet.
No.
But you're making an assumption that when that happens, then we go back and make that retroactive, and that's what the cost will be?
No, and for purposes of cost comparison, the, these numbers were put together on the assumption that everything that was requested in the proposed MOU from the union was, essentially everything was put in there. And again, everything that was proposed by the county is also in there, without getting ahead of others that may be involved in that. There is still negotiations left. It is possible that costs in one or the other alternatives may well decline depending upon how we proceed with the negotiations.
Further questions or comments? Sullivan?
Mr. Mayor, there is another component of the presentation. In addition to the one-time costs that were identified by the county, if alternative number, proposal number two, which is the paramedic program, is identified at $684,732 would be a one-time cost to the city. There are some additional costs, as we indicated, that we would have a liability should the city council so choose to cash out any accumulated sick leave, vacation leave, and other benefits, which was not included in the county proposal. I don't know if we have that number available tonight. But offsetting potentially these one-time costs is, the city currently has an outstanding liability, which is the issue raised by Councilman Rothschild with regard to outstanding and current litigation. And our litigation attorney, Howard Gold, is here to make a presentation on what the potential liability of our outstanding litigation currently is.
Before he gets up here, let me make a comment about that. As far as the accumulation of unused sick leave and unused vacation time, those funds are payable whether or not we retain the paramedic program and move along as we are now, or whether it goes to the county. The only issue is how fast are you going to pay it? Because we permit our employees to cash out unused vacation time, unused sick time. So in our analysis, I omitted that simply because it is not a differential between the two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, and I'm Howard Golds with Best, Best &amp; Krieger, and I am responsible for a lot of the labor litigation that goes on with the city. I cannot discuss in open session the specifics of individual cases that are pending with, generally speaking, either firefighters or with the union. However, I did want to, we did want to bring to your attention the fact that in 2004, 2005, essentially you had no litigation. Starting in 2006, there was a substantial increase in the amount of litigation grievances and claims that were being brought against the city, either by individual firefighters or by the, their association. We had nine such claims, grievances, litigation matters brought in 2006. Three of those were disposed of in 2007, but another five were brought. So there was a total of eight in 2007. Not sure that I have the number for 2008. Some of those matters are clearly ongoing and continue to generate both potential liabilities to the city as well as, frankly, attorney's fees, because you have to pay us to represent the city in these matters. And it has taken not only a fair amount of attorney time, but I think it has taken a fair amount of staff time to deal with all of these issues, both in the human resources area as well as some of the other areas of the city. But again, I can't really go into the specifics of individual ones. Obviously, with the litigation matters, there is potential for liability. Some of these matters, the plaintiffs are seeking substantial remuneration from the city on various claims, both wage claims as well as what I might describe as personnel claims. That is what is going on at the moment in terms of litigation and potential liability. I don't know if any of you have any questions?
Questions or comments from members of the council?
I want to make sure I've got this straight. Say there was essentially no litigation in, I hear you're right, '05, '06?
'04 and '05.
'04 and '05. '04 and '05? And then it spiked in '06 to how many?
Nine.
And in '07, how many new or additional cases were filed in '07?
Three were refiled and then five new ones were brought.
So how many are pending as we speak?
Well, I know there are two litigation matters in federal court that are presently pending. I know there is at least one complaint before PERB, the Public Employees Relations Board, that is pending. There are a variety of other complaints and grievances, as I understand it, that are pending as well and that continue to, in one form or another, continue to be, I don't want to say debated, but they continue to be dealt with by the city.
Kind of hit on what I was...
There has been a substantial change in, as you put it, the texture, the nature of both the relationship and the amount of litigation that has occurred.
All that aspect would, if to a county contract and effectively, we would not be any, part of any, part of those types of litigations. Is that correct?
That appears to be correct. Obviously, you have to continue to deal with those issues that are out there now, but once, if you were to move to the county, it would seemingly end the further bringing of these kinds of actions.
Do we have any idea if any have been filed, new matters filed in 2008 to date?
I'm not aware, I know at least from the litigation standpoint, I'm not aware of any new matters in 2008. I believe both the matters I'm aware of were filed in 2007 or when maybe even been filed in 2006.
Further?
Dan, I may want to pull a proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just want to point out that the cost analysis that was done by staff, we retained the cost and budgetary numbers for continuing to provide hazmat, COOPA, plan check, inspection, weed abatement, administration, and the retention of a division chief. That concludes the staff analysis of the comparative costs of the proposals.
Okay, I have cards. Jake Jaworski?
Good evening, Mayor, council people.
Before, I should indicate always the practice with us on the cards, three minutes.
I just wanted to share two life experiences I've experienced in my life. I've been with a company for 30 years, and in those 30 years, I've been a first aid CPR responder, fully trained for 18 of those years. And most of the time, it's cuts and bruises and broken bones, something simple. But in 2006, we had a man go down with a major heart attack. At that time, our first aid CPR responded, and we had about 20 of them, it's a huge distribution facility. We did everything we could at that time that we were trained to do. And fortunately, the man was breathing and he still had a heart rate. When the paramedics arrived from the city that we're in, which is Ontario, they immediately hooked him up to monitors, flipped him over, and merely started first aid CPR, full-blown CPR, because apparently he was in duress. But by our just media, by our training that we had, we didn't know that. And that man ended up dying, you know, on the way to the hospital or they never recovered. So we looked back and did an investigation, and I felt guilty for a time because I'm wondering, did we do everything right? Well, we did everything right, but what we didn't have was the proper equipment, in this case, an AED unit, which we're talking about getting, but it's so costly for that facility. We said, yes, we do, no, we don't, but that was the deciding factor for that person right there, that if we would have had appropriate equipment and training on that equipment at that time, he may be alive today. So that's something I have to live with for the rest of my life. Second life story is, last Friday, I live in Eagle Ranch, there was a major accident on Eagle Ranch Parkway and Bear Valley Road, and I heard it from my backyard. And I immediately called Councilwoman Allman, said, hey, we have another accident here. When are we going to get a light there? But we started, I started timing it. I didn't have a stopwatch, so the first people to arrive was the police department. They blocked off the highway. And about five minutes later, the fire department arrived. And about five to seven minutes later after that, AMR arrived. Now, time is of the essence in a major collision. If the paramedics would have been on board that fire department, their vehicle, they would have been there to treat those people. I don't know how bad it was. We saw that fire, and I could see it clearly from my house. So the fire department arrived. Apparently, there was no major injuries at this point in time, but they checked for fire, make sure no vehicles were going to catch on fire because it was a major collision. The whole point of this is that you are empowered to take care of the people of this community. You have to make a decision as to how you're going to better serve this community. And the question is whether we can afford to put paramedics on the unit, can you afford not to? You are empowered to take care of the safety of these, and these are the tools of people behind you. These are your tools at your service. So make sure you make the right decision. We need paramedics on those rigs because time is of the essence in any major traffic incident. Thank you.
You. Marty Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for taking all your time to consider this issue. It's really a critical issue. It's a very important public safety issue. As we said two years ago when we came in front of the year or spoke with the city manager and brought this proposal forward, alls we've asked from this council is to give us the tools to do the job. We had a little different analysis of the proposal from County Fire, and I want to address an issue with County Fire just real briefly. We have the utmost respect for our brothers in the county that provide fire protection. They are an excellent fire department, and they treat their employees very, very well. A couple of months ago, we sat down and met with representatives of County Fire and discussed the pros and cons of consolidating this group with County Fire and being part of that organization. And we do definitely do see the benefits of working with County Fire. There are a lot of good aspects of it. Having said that, we also know that there are some great aspects to working in the great city of the city of Victorville, working here. And as we've said before, a lot of us are homegrown boys who've worked here for our careers and years, gone to school here, been taught by some of you up here, mentored by some of you. And there was a lot of dedication and devotion to this city from this fire department, these folks, these gentlemen standing behind me. And with that in mind, the local decided that they didn't want to endorse a proposal that would mean that they would be going to County Fire. And that was pretty much, although there were some debate and there were a few members that didn't agree with it, that was an overwhelming consensus that they wanted to encourage this council to give us the tools to do our job so we can be on the cutting edge in the fire service, so we can bring this fire department up to the industry standard. And I think Captain Wheaton and others, members of the Paramedic Committee have done an excellent job bringing forth that information. Although I don't agree with everything that was said here tonight, the numbers that were presented up there were, in my opinion, conjecture and perhaps inflated. I noticed that there's a 13% pay increase in there for the firefighters. It brought that up to about $1.6 million, which does make this comparison comparable to the county firefighters. So I think that's unfair at this point to throw that in there, although there is a possibility of that. With regards to the litigation that Mr. Golds just discussed, and I'm not here to discuss litigation, but I'm only aware of three issues that are outstanding with the city. I'm not aware of seven, as he stated. One of them was brought by a member several years ago from the fire department that was trying to resolve an issue, and two of them were essentially from the local. And they are issues that we can resolve if anybody wants to sit down and really talk to us about them. And I know Mr. Rothschild, he asked us years ago when we brought the captains in, the local, give this council a chance to resolve these issues. And we've yet to have that opportunity to really sit down and negotiate, sit down with this council, and sit down with city staff and try and resolve these issues. That's why our proposal that you've seen, that we presented earlier, is about conflict resolution, trying to show that we can work together. Tonight is a great example. The Paramedic Committee is a great example of how our firefighters have shown that we can work with the city. And this wouldn't have happened here without your firefighters. Your firefighters brought this idea up, but we said, we need the tools. We need to be out there. There's equipment needs, there's stations that need to be built, so we can provide the level of service that I think this community deserves and bring us up to the standards in the state. And with that in mind, I do want to thank you again for taking the time and hope you make a fair decision, right decision, in the interest of the community and the public and within the budgetary constraints this city has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all of the cards I have. Is there anyone else who had intended to speak and did not turn in a card? All right, then I'm going to terminate the public comment, public participation part of this, and we will now, as a council, discuss, debate, make whatever decisions that seem appropriate. And who wants to lead off?
Five-minute recess.
Been here for two hours.
Councilman Cabrealis has requested a five-minute recess, and I'm getting nudged by Councilwoman Allman, so... At 7 o'clock, we'll be back at 7:05.
Tough it out, but I would rather not.
Back to order. Councilman Hunter's indicated that he has a question he would like to pose.
Yeah, Chief, I'm not, Chief Dan, and I'm not sure who you want to answer this question. Should the city go over to the County Fire Department, the current existing firefighters in the city of Victorville? What is the process if they would like to become paramedics in your department?
We currently have a program, and we don't have it currently funded, but we have a program that we did in Fontana a few years ago where we did give the employees the opportunity to go to paramedic school, and we paid them to go. We don't have anything in the budget right now to do that, but that certainly is a consideration that we can look at. A paramedic training program is always an opportunity, and right now, that's what we can say the hottest commodity on the market is a paramedic, and there is a shortage of paramedics. So one of the options that we're looking at right now is how we do our recruitment. We normally require a firefighter academy, and then we train them to be a paramedic. And now what we're looking at is looking for the paramedic and train him to be a firefighter. So we're looking at different opportunities to hire and recruit. But taking a firefighter and offering a paramedic program, training program in the future is certainly a possibility, but right now it's unfunded, so we'd have to create a program for it.
Second question for you is, we've got firefighters that have been here 30 years, I guess, you know, all different ranges. How do, how do they come over to your department as far as salaries go? Are they, or do they come in at a certain level for many of years on the service? How do you do that?
For the, what we generally do with them is they come over rank for rank. They come over in the salary range closest to the existing salary range they are now. And they come over and they accrue, leave accruals at the rate of time in service. So if they're in for 30 years, they come in at our MOU at the same rate they accrue at 30 years as if they work for us. The difference is they have accrual balances now. When they come over with us, they won't have any balances, but they'll have the accrual rate.
Right. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Pat, what about the pension? I know you have a different county pension as opposed to the PRS that most of us are under.
You know, I'm the wrong guy to ask about pension comparisons. I'm not sure if any of the labor folks...
Actually, the question would be, when they leave here and say they have 18 years, what happens to those 18 years?
Are you on PERS now? Is that what they're on now? There is reciprocity with the county system, so they would end their PERS time, they would start their county time, and at retirement, they would receive a check from both.
Other questions? Okay, who wants to launch the dialogue?
Well, let me, let me start. I think it's not, it's not a question of whether we want to implement a paramedic program. I think we all, we all want that. The Paramedic Committee cannot make a recommendation regarding the county. We didn't have all the figures, and I don't think that was our task. That's up to the city council. But if they did not go, if the council did not go with the county, then our recommendation would be that we start with the three-man or three-person engine company with the third person being the paramedic, and perhaps the chief also had an idea of implementing a squad in there somewhere. That was, that was our recommendation. But that's only if, if the council decides not to go with the county contract. And that is the question that this council will have to wrestle with and come to decision with.
Solomon?
I feel the same. I think... Because it's so close, I think that we should really give it a try for our firefighters.
Hunter, Mr. Rothschild?
Well, the county's contract intrigues me in a couple of ways. The economy aside, I think is important in the long term when you look at the ability to keep the cost, the inflated cost each year ramps up down. And that's not a small issue when you, when you are talking from year to year and you're trying to keep that in the cost of living framework and not expanding it beyond that area. So the economy aside, the purchasing, those kind of things translates back into future contracts, not so much the current one that's on the table the most. Another one that I think is big plus for the county is the risk management issues associated with that and the bit of insulation that the city gets from that kind of a countywide contract. The litigation is a part of that. I think it's an important part of it. It seems that the nature of that aspect is an ongoing problem that each, whether it's the city or the county, has to deal with, but it's, it's one of those cost factors that has to be considered in this. Contracting out sometimes lightens load in that area. The biggest one that I think for me this evening was, I'm thinking about the positive aspect, and I'll mention the negatives in a minute because there are some, is that we get the paramedics in place now instead of three or four years from now, our phased-in aspect. We can do it. So those are, to me, all relatively big issues in my mind as to saying the county contract looks like a reasonable idea. The negative side of that is, and it's an intangible, it's kind of hard for me to measure. I mean, I'm a teacher for 33 years, several, a number of these people in this, in this group right here came through my classes. They're all home, they truly is. Many of them are homegrown, and they know the city, they know the people, they know the environment, they know what's expected of them. And that's an important quality that you can't put a dollar and cent issue on, and it's a hard one to divorce yourself from. And I'll tell you how you would overcome that in my mind. The difference in the two, our costs that John Solven outlined and the actual cost that you've come up with, if that number had been substantially different, I would, I'd begin to say, well, the professionalism of being a firefighter moving around the county is not so much that we couldn't, you know, excuse that, but it isn't a large enough savings in that, in the dollar and cent issue, and yet the uncertainty that would, and it's a proper uncertainty, because if I were the county, I wouldn't guarantee you guys, you're going to stay in Victorville for the rest of your careers. I wouldn't do that. You work for the county, you don't work for the city. And so to me, that's certainly a reasonable evaluation on the contract and the decision-making. And you didn't hear him stand up here and say, well, sit down and guarantee you'll all stay here. He can't do that, and he shouldn't if he's doing his job properly. But it's a negative from the county, from my side of point, looking, considering the county's part of it. So I, I'm going to sit here in a moment and mull this over, but as I sit here right now, I gave it a very strong thought about moving towards the county, and I'm leaning towards retaining our firemen in the city. We are retaining all of our apparatus in any case, though. It's not like we're kind of saying, let's Kings X, let's try the county for a few years, and if that didn't work out, move back to our base one again. I don't, that disruption wouldn't work at all. It'd be irresponsible. So even though the county has presented some excellent points that I like, I have a hard time taking that personal separation from the, some of these guys and all of them, whether they like me or not. The fact is that I have that same relationship with my classrooms as I do with this fire department, and so it'd be hard for me to separate myself from them and turn them over to a very professional and very nice organization, the county. That's where I'm sitting right now. I'm inclined to say, even though we won't get our paramedics in place if we move immediately to begin that process, that that would be something that I, a detriment that I could live with as long as we get into that vein of being up and running and say, hard, fast, five-year maximum, and everybody's in play and under the rules here, and we're all moving and working together, and we're not, there's nothing going on behind the scenes to undermine that. I know there's a lot of you will be wanting to be that EMT first or that first classes and things like that, but that stuff better be smoothed out because that, again, is what the power of a union could be. They could be very positive in those kind of relationships. So as I'm sitting here right now, I... could be very positive in those kind of relationships. So as I'm sitting here right now, I'm leaning towards retaining the city under our jurisdiction and move towards our proposal of putting the paramedic program in place.
Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Chief Denham. That was a great presentation you gave. You guys put a lot of work into this. I really appreciate that. I think all of you know it's been over a year that I asked for paramedics to be considered for the fire department. And that's what this whole thing was about. It kind of has gotten to an elaborate issue with a lot of studying and so on. And I guess I'm glad we did that. I do have a little bit of irritation I want to bring up that I got a call a couple nights ago. And I know there's rumors go on with these kind of things. I understand how that works. I'm sure there was rumors in the county, there's rumors in the city. But I want to lay something on the line and correct some misconceptions. I got a call a couple nights ago that indicated that some firefighters felt that I was talking behind closed doors with the county fire department. And I guess that's because I worked for the county, which didn't make me very happy since I'm the one that brought this to the council. And I'm also the one that's been supporting the fire department in the paper. But I'll clear the air here that I have never talked to the county about this issue. In fact, Chief Denham will remember, I called him a couple months ago about another issue on hazardous material issues. And the first thing when he called me back, I says, "Chief, I'm not talking to you about the paramedic program." So I have never talked to anybody in the county about the paramedic program. Purposely have not done that and have not called the chief back on my job issues because I'm trying to keep it separated. So I want everyone to know I have not done that. But I am irritated that someone in this department would think that. As far as the program goes, I'm torn. I really am. We have a great department here. I think we have a great bunch of firefighters. I also know the county's a great department. My whole issue is I wanted paramedics on our fire trucks. And I think I want to get that as quick as possible. For me, it's, I guess, it's a difference between phasing in over a five-year period or having paramedics in several months on the fire trucks. Dollar for doggo, I have to go by what our staff says the fees would be or the cost would be. I see what the county's costs are going to be. It's kind of a wash here or there. And this is a hard decision for me. So I'm still, at this point, as I'm talking, trying to figure out what I want to do. But I will tell you that I am moving towards the county position. And that's a change from what I've said. But I also told the firefighters that my decision's going to be based on the information I received. That I'm not making a decision beforehand, and I've never done that. I think it's a great proposal. I want to see paramedics on the truck. I know change is hard for everyone. I think it's not as bad as everyone would think it would be. I think they would like the department. Some may, some might not. I don't think they're going to lose anything reality-wise. I think they're going to gain a lot if we went to the county. And I say that because there's more movement they could move. I think there's more upward mobility, vertical mobility for them in the county than there is here. It's going to take us time and money to train paramedics. If we go with the county, we're going to have paramedics on our engines as soon as they come over or thereabouts. So I'm leaning towards that. And it's probably not popular, but I'm not here just to be popular. I'm here to do the right thing for the community. And I think the county proposal is the right thing to do for this community. I think it gives us, if you look at our county contract with the sheriff department and all the added benefits we get from that, we get helicopters we don't pay for. We get detectives up here for homicides we don't pay for. We get man-hours we don't pay for. Our contract is a good one. We have a good one, but we have the support services, which I know we will get from the county fire department. One thing that I'm disappointed we didn't work in here is the hazardous materials issue. And maybe that can be worked in later, and maybe there's a reason we're not doing it. I don't know. But I see a plus, I see a plus for the city. And I honestly see a plus for the firefighters if we go with the county. So I'm going to put it there.
Well, this is both a tough issue and an emotional issue for me, more so than probably anybody on the dais. I've lived with this fire department since its inception. Remember, early Saturday morning in 1974, first few months as the mayor, vast majority of the volunteer firemen came to my house with donuts and coffee because they were upset with the Victorville Fire Protection District Management, the lack of training and equipment. And they made a strong pitch to me to try and convince the council to move aggressively to take over the fire protection district and begin to build a full-time professional fire department. It was a bloodbath. I lost a lot of friends over that issue. Got three people to run on a platform that if they were elected, they would immediately turn the Victorville Fire Protection District over to the city of Victorville. It was blood and guts because it was a battle of wills, but ultimately it went to the voters, and the voters supported the three people who ran specifically on a pledge to turn the district over to the city. It started out, Mr. Cox and I had the good fortune of stumbling across Rudy. And Rudy basically has built this department from scratch. It has not been an easy program for him. We launched the first CETA program. We got, I forget, five, six, seven employees to come to work for us as CETA employees for a year to learn to be firemen. And some of them fulfilled their full career right here in the city of Victorville. So it's a somewhat emotional issue for me. It's somewhat of a difficult issue. But for me, the analysis has got to be, first and foremost, what is in the best interest of the 105,000 people that we represent? Not what's in the best interests of any vested interest groups, whether it's firefighters or the union or people at this dais or some small constituencies that have other issues and other axes to grind. We're elected to make decisions based on what's in the best interests of the city and the people that we represent. I think that the very people who promoted this at the beginning have won me over. They have convinced me. Even though it was a long, lengthy presentation that Mr. Wheaton presented that first night, he had a lot of data, a lot of facts and figures. Somewhat like Mr. Hunter, I'm a little chagrined because there are people sitting in this audience who I know have been quoted as saying that I opposed the paramedic program. And that's simply not true. I've never said one word in opposition to the paramedic program. And those of you in the audience know who I'm talking about. It's a bunch of nonsense. But again, I got to put the personal issues aside. Mr. Wheaton made a strong case for the urgency of having somebody instantaneously trained and on the scene to administer a level of care that the EMTs cannot. And he talked about saving a life, even one life. Mr. Brown has made similar comments. Mr. Jaworski said it very eloquently tonight. As we've had these discussions in the past, people from the community have come in and said, we want paramedics. We want paramedics now. And some of them have had very personal experiences. Ms. Almond has had a very personal experience with the importance of paramedics. So for those of you who may have been told that I am opposed to paramedics, that's just simply not true. But I'm also convinced that rapid implementation of a paramedic program meets the very test that the people in the fire department and others have presented to this council. To hear about a five-year phase-in, that does not meet the urgency requirement that I've heard so many of you and others express. Whether it's five years or whether it's more or less than five years is difficult to assess. Remember, the Apple Valley Fire Protection District is a self-sustaining district with tax revenues that we don't have as a city. The entire state is in a very difficult financial crunch right now. We do not know how much of the $20 billion subvention hit will fall on the city of Victorville, but we know we'll be forced to pick up a piece of that. And we don't know how long that's going to take. We don't know whether the state, and therefore the county, and ultimately the city, will become better off financially next year or the year after or several years from now. And every economist has their own prediction. So I suspect that a five-year phase-in, if economic times continue to be bleak as they are now, might get extended. Of course, the reverse is true. You know, we could overnight have returned to strong economic times and maybe do better than a five-year phase-in. But that's a gamble. That's a risk. It has been said many times throughout the entire paramedic discussion that time is critical. Time is of the essence. Everybody is saying to us, as the five decision-makers, we want paramedics. We want them now. And I'm prepared to make that commitment and move in that direction. There are benefits. The career path opens up for the firemen in terms of where they can go tomorrow and next year and beyond, a substantial career path beyond what is currently available in the city of Victorville. For some, that's not important. For some, it may be. But I'd remind this council that, you know, we are a pro-growth council. We are growing rapidly. And as we grow, we're going to hire more firemen. And my bet is that new recruits would be more attracted to a broader career path opportunity than a restricted one. For the guys in the department who grew up here and don't want to leave, I understand that. You know, I've spent 40 years living here by choice. But I also think I'm encouraged by Chief Denham's comment that he's at least willing to talk to us and negotiate for some type of possible retention policies so that people who are here long-term and don't have a career path ladder issue, that maybe they can be accommodated. And that's important to me, as I said earlier. So taking all of the material and a year or more worth of study and work by a lot of people, I'm convinced that the city deserves the paramedic program. I believe that the fastest, most expedient, and at least cost-neutral mechanism to do that is to immediately contract with the county, and that's where my vote would be.
Is that your motion?
I'll so move.
Can we, can I ask you a couple things in your motion? If you could, if we could direct the negotiations or some kind of negotiations be made for seeing what the dispatch center can be done, if that can be worked into it or discussed, at least those employees, what would happen to them, or if they could, you know, bifurcate their dispatch centers. And then whatever other negotiations would be beneficial for the employees that want to stay in the area or if they don't.
Well, it's implicit in the motion, but I will recast the motion to include Mr. Hunter's comments and concerns about the dispatch center.
I'll make one comment before we go to the vote. And as you mentioned, that I was hired in 1976 to start this fire department. So it's been very close to my heart. We lived together in the fire stations for, at least for 21 years that I was the chief here. And so I have an emotional tie to the men and women of the Victorville Fire Department. And to me, the county contract is a good contract. It's real close to what our figures are. But I think that, for me, I would much rather have the paramedic program stay with the Victorville Fire Department, and that's how I'm going to vote. Not that the county department can do a good job, because they would. But that's just the way I feel. And chalk it up to just being here for 32 years and being with these guys for these many years. I just have to do that.
There's a motion. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
One more comment.
On the motion.
Mr. Caldwell has moved me to the other side of the question because there is an urgency issue involved in this thing, and it was voiced by several representatives from the fire department. And as I said, the big issue in my, one of the biggest issues in my mind was the paramedics coming into play immediately as opposed to this phase-in, which I would feel comfortable with. But I'd rather see that urgency met immediately. And I've been struggling with this. My feelings would be to stay the way it is, maintain the status quo. That's my true feelings. But I truly believe, in the best interests of this city, the quicker we can implement the paramedic program, the better this city is, the safer this city is, and the better served it is. You guys are professionals, and I think you'll deal with that. And we'll put a serious discussion down as to maintaining as much of that continuity within the city as we can. So my vote is going to go with the motion.
I just make one more comment.
Certainly.
I know we've got a motion on the floor, and a second. When we were given the long presentation from Mr. Wheaton, the motion wa, the motion, the urgency was for us to implement paramedics, for our firefighters to start getting involved with paramedics. Nothing against the county. It was a beautiful presentation. The work went into this thing. I can't believe the work that went into it. But it was for our firefighters to get involved with paramedic program. If there was a very big difference in the cost, I could say yes. We've been without paramedics for a long time. I don't see anybody dying tomorrow because we don't have paramedics today. I didn't. It was one of our firefighters that sat there and convinced me to go to the hospital. And he's sitting in the audience. It's, we have the firefighters, they're always there first, and they take care of whoever's in trouble until AMR comes. I really, really believe that what Dave was trying to get us to believe is, we need paramedics. We don't need them tomorrow. I feel that with a phase-in, we'd come in gradually. I think we'd be fine. I don't see where we would be in big trouble. So I'm not going to vote for, no offense, I'm not going to vote for the county.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, I'm going to call for the vote. Passes three to two. The staff, Mr. Roberts and others, are directed, as a spirit of that motion, to immediately engage in discussions with Chief Denham and the folks from the county fire. And we would set a target date of trying to have this implemented July 1, 2008.
May I ask one more thing? What happens when it becomes a charter city?
Council will now be invited into a closed session for conference with the legal council pursuant to the items set forth on the agenda. Are there any additional items to be added? Mr. D. Bortnowsky?
Additional items, special meeting.